Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 17th Planning Commission meeting. Call it to order. I'll do the roll call. Daniels is gone, Duncan here, Hema?
Here.
Derek Lindell?
Here.
Glenn Lindell?
Here.
And Matt Montgomery?
Here.
Okay. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by the Lindells. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone and before speaking, please give your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. From what I can see, everybody here is already on the agenda, so we will end the public input. Item six is public hearing, a variance of three feet for Eric and Lori Smith at 1208 West State Street. They are proposing to widen their current driveway to within two feet of the property line. Current driveway setback is five feet. Diana, you taking that one?
Yep.
Absolutely. Okay, so the Smiths had a curb cut put in when the new street was put in. It's a 26-foot curb cut and they are just hoping to access that extra space. Right now their driveway is nine feet. They want to bring it up to 18 feet. Does anybody have any questions on that for me?
Were there any neighbor objections that you know of?
Nothing that came up, Derek.
Okay. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Is there anybody that wishes to speak toward this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commission, any thoughts?
I went by there yesterday. Didn't look like it would be too bad by adding it and if the next door neighbor doesn't object, I don't really have a problem with it.
Okay. Well, with that, before we vote on the resolution, I neglected to ask for the approval of the minutes, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion items. Resolution 2020-05, the variance for Eric and Lori Smith at 1208 West State Street. We just had the public hearing. Anybody wish to make an emotion on that?
I will make a motion to pass Resolution 2020-05.
I'll second it.
Second by Bruce. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next discussion item is Resolution 2020-06, an administrative subdivision for Jody Ripple at 500 Middle Street. Administrative subdivision slash lot split for Jody Ripple, currently one parcel. It is being proposed to allow this parcel to be split into two parcels. Each parcel would have to meet the zoning requirements of the city of Cannon Falls. Neil?
Yeah, this lot split could have been done administratively, but I want to call your attention to your handout that was just handed out under 151 dot 11. You'll see a highlighted, it says administrative subdivision. It says, "Any subdivision containing not more than two lots fronting on an old street." That's the key right there, approved, improved. "Not involving the dedication and/or construction of any new street or road, the extension of municipal facilities, or the creation of any public improvements." Now, we could have done this administratively, but this particular lot split that they want to do is on a unimproved alley. And so I thought it'd be prudent to bring it to Planning Commission to discuss. And there's some concerns with the lot split. I'd like to also call your attention to your packet. And there's some highlighted areas in your packet that talk about different parts of the ordinance that we have talked about at the staff level. So I talked about, it's not on an improved public street, then you go to buildable land. And it says contiguous land area occurring within the property lines of a parcel of lot, of the lot, excluding drainage ways, wetlands, water courses, park land, rights roads away, and slopes in excess of 18 percent. So if you look in your packet, there's a couple of surveys, one provided by the Ripples and one that was done by Samuelson and one done by Massey. And we have a conflicting buildable lot area. The one from Massey was provided by the Ripples and the one was done by Samuelson that we had on file. This particular area has been attempted before to be split off and has failed. And now we're back again with the new owners of the property and they would like to split it off also. So we've got some issues with the buildable land and one of the things I'd like to talk about also is more of running water and sewer down that alleyway. If you look where the water main is and you look under, I've got to find it in my paperwork, but it states that under subdivisions on page 35, it's in your handout, but I'll just read it to you, underwater supply. "The water utility extension should be consistent with the comprehensive water plan and offers the opportunity for water main looping to serve the urban subdivision." Now, this will be a 300-foot dead-end service. And in my experience with services of that kind, 300 feet is a long ways. That's a whole block. I'm guessing we'll have calls. We have calls already with stale water. And I'd like to know from the Ripples how they're going to handle the dead-end water. And in the sewer, I guess you could pump it. That's not a big deal. But the water is concerning because it will come back and we'll be responsible for it, even though it is a private service line. So there's another item that we're concerned with. And then it's the level of the street. That's a 16-foot alley. Typically, you're supposed to have, when you're going to divide a lot like this or split off a lot like this, you've got to have a street frontage. So this one is really interesting. That's why I've got it sitting in front of you. Otherwise, we'd have done it administratively. You take a look at the buildable areas that we have on the two surveys. One of them is, what, 31 and 3/4 feet deep by, and it's a triangle. I don't know what kind of house that would be. So that particular survey from Samuelson, you'd have to have a variance of the building setbacks to approve a house on that one. And then the other one, I see the difference between the two is where they establish the bluff setback. And the other one that you see there is, has the bluff setback further on to back into the bluff. So there's two different surveys. I don't know, I guess if you want to allow a lot that's on an alleyway and not on an approved street, and it's just questionable. I certainly think as a planning commission, I'd take a look at it.
Setbacks on that property, the front would be 25 and the rear would be 20 feet.
Okay. Jody, would you like to address some of the issues that have been mentioned? And if you, well, if you, could you come up to the microphone here?
So the conflicting survey is news to me. So I guess I'd like to see that survey. It's older. Like this one, the one from Massey was just done within the last couple of months. So I guess I'm surprised that there's, that they conflict. So I might want to just have a copy of that Samuelson one and just analyze it a little bit. So I mean, I guess I need to think about that. I have a, I mean, I have a very good blown-up copy of just the buildable area. I don't know if that would help to pass that out or send it around or I can email it out. But it's pretty clear, at least from the Massey survey, that two houses would probably fit here. One comfortably, two are doable. I don't, I'm not looking to do more than two, probably just one for right now, just the one. I don't, the 16-foot alley, you know, there'd be very little traffic because it would just be, right now it's just Anderson's access that alley and then if there were one other house there, it would just be that other family. So that would be the only traffic on that alley. So right now it seems like it's actually fairly underutilized. The stale water thing, you know, I find that hard to believe if there's a lot, if there's a full-time family living there. I mean, that could happen if somebody was only living there part-time and maybe wasn't, you know, wasn't flushing their toilets every day or wasn't doing dishes and that kind of thing. So I don't know, you know, that's not, I don't, that just doesn't seem very realistic to me, but I guess they would be curious to know how many calls you get on the stale water thing and what the situation is.
Can the city put in like a one-inch line and run down there? I mean, then it probably wouldn't get stale.
That would have to be the homeowner.
Okay.
Yeah, instead of a full, like, six-inch water main, that would make sense.
Right. Yeah, instead of a six-inch, just put in an inch, which would cover probably two houses or inch and a half.
It's, it is common when water is not looped for it to become stale, and that's what we're talking here. That's why it has nothing so much to do with the usage. It's everywhere, most everywhere in the city, the water gets looped, so it's always getting fresh.
Oh, okay.
We did have someone here, the last month or two, came forward because of that very condition and asking us to look at that, so.
Okay.
It does happen.
If we're doing like one lot, you know, just do like a one-inch service water line, that would probably help quite a bit of that, instead of having six inches of water sit around.
Okay, as it's not a, an improved street or anything, who would do things like the snow plowing?
They got it all over the place.
Yeah, right now, Mr. Anderson does all that with just his own personal equipment. So there would have to be some kind of agreement or maybe a mini association. You know, someone could pay someone to do it. I mean, you'd only have to really have that agreement between two people. So I think that could be reached.
I'm not familiar with Mr. Massey's work. Rick Samuelson, I'm very familiar. I've known Rick for years. The topography doesn't change at all. Why Massey put it back into the bluff? We do have a set.
30-foot setback.
Thing that we do setbacks on bluff property and this is awful, awful tight. Just to be kind.
Can I show you what you guys, the, the blowout emergency, you can actually kind of, yeah, copy, copy service, you can kind of see that, do that. So if you're looking at, yeah, so it's sitting in there just like that. So this is the alleyway here.
Right, right. No, I understand that.
30-foot setback, 30 foot from the bluff, that leaves 60 foot here.
But I don't, I don't think, boy, that's tight. I'll let others here. Matt, you want to look and pass it down?
Neil, with all the information that we have here, if previous property owners tried to do the same thing, was it cited why they were rejected then?
I don't know why the reasoning was, but they just dropped it. And I think it was a struggle.
So from what I understand, the neighbor next door said there at one time, whoever owned it before was talking like 20 lots somehow on that property?
Right, I think he had more unrealistic expectations for that area because, I mean, it's.
There's a lot of river bottom off the bottom of that bluff, so there's not, you know, that's the buildable area. What you see there, that is, that is it.
Yeah, I think he thought he was going to put in a very large development, more like 20 lots.
Well, like I said, I have some issues with the water that you're going to have to, water and sewer that you're going to have to bring in. Unimproved road, who's going to be in charge of it? Not just snow removal, but other, you know, maintaining it. I often walk down to where the road goes to because I live in that neighborhood.
Okay.
And there's barely enough room right now for a car to go through. So how are you going to address those issues? We don't want to create a future problem for the city where you guys might own it now, if they come forward and say, well, gee, city, you've got to do this, this, and this. You're putting us in a difficult position.
What, I mean.
If it's something the city doesn't want to deal with, could they do like a permanent easement to that owner where you guys just, I mean, that road goes into the end of that bluff, so I don't think it's really, you know, something for the city's never going to develop anymore down there. They're never going to develop it as a tar road, right? Could you make it into, where they buy the land or something, then the city doesn't have anything to do with it anymore? Make it private?
If you did that, you'd have to, when you vacate it, it would vacate, well, 16-foot, you'd take eight-foot and give it to this property owner and eight-foot would go to this property owner, which would, then it really would be tight. Because that's how you typically, if you vacate a street, half and half goes.
Which way?
Right, that's the other issue. It still doesn't front a city street, which is in our, in our definitions and that kind of thing.
So can you explain to me what the concern is, just more simplistically? Because if someone's plowing it and maintaining it now and it's not an issue, what becomes an issue by adding another house there, I guess, is what I'm asking?
How would you want to explain that?
Well, two of them homes, that is, the alley is just his garage. He faces the street.
Yep.
And then the other one has got a portion of the street, your house.
Yep.
And this one does not have any street frontage. That's the concern. And I.
There is a hydrant there too, so at least there's that for fire too, is one thing that is right on the corner of that cul-de-sac.
Right.
So that helps at least too, that there is a.
Well, there's not an address back there either. It's an alley, so I would imagine that whoever developed that would have to put in some sort of a street, if we made that part of the deal.
What would we give it for an address?
Well, yeah, that's another issue. I didn't think of that. And I'm still not sure if it's buildable, because anytime you have a slope in excess of about 18, 20 degrees, it's, and you've got to be, have that setback, so I don't even know if that's feasible.
Is that all limestone underneath there?
What's that?
Does it have lime, is it limestone base under it?
I think so.
At some point on the bluff, you can see on the backside, there's limestone. I imagine there's, I'm not familiar with the soil.
Building on limestone or sand, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, there's limestone at some point if you look on the bluff, but I mean, I'm sure the, her ba, she's got a full basement right there. It's going to be about the same elevation, so I imagine it's not, I'm sure there's some sort of dirt on top of it. It would be perfect for a walkout lot, basically, but the sewer would have to be pumped from the basement up because hers is already for the elevation-wise. This station.
In the basement, yeah.
Just offhand, it seems to me I need a little time with this, to consider this a little more. This is, could be trouble, it could be no problem. We don't have all the.
Right, we don't have all the answers that we need here.
All the answers, yeah, that's for sure.
Right, and one of the questions from the city attorney also says structural capacity. So I think if you have a study that shows where the building site would be, with the composition of the soil, how firm it is, all that stuff, that would probably help your cause.
Are there core samples from that area?
Right, because if we give you the thumbs up and then we find out it's no good.
It's all clay and you're all downhill.
Right.
Okay.
Does a city engineer need to get, like, maybe involved and see what?
I think a lot of this has got to do with our ordinance and whether it's allowed to be a lot away from a public street, you know, one lot away from her house and then another one. And if it's a buildable area, you know, we got conflicting surveys. And I don't know, I've been in this business quite a few years. know, I, uh, I've been in this business quite a while, and I've taken a lot of calls for stagnant water, and, uh, three hundred foot service, I don't know if you'd find many of them in, in any city, to be honest with you, that's a whole block long.
It is.
And, um, so, I don't know.
I, I'm just spitballing this, but we've had other people that have asked for a variance, to have their own septic and their own well.
Mm-hmm.
Usually, obviously, our photography is a little unique, and with the river right there, would that be an option to avoid the stagnant water, or?
I don't, I don't know if they'd have room to put it in that little area.
There'd be room for one, I, I mean, a normal three bedroom septic is like forty by sixty feet, my dad puts them in, but there wouldn't be, usually you have to have two sites, I already kinda went over that with him, just looking at.
To make it worth putting it in? To have to, at least two sites?
You have to have two sites usually, unless you have, probably have to have a variance, again, only have one or something, I don't know exactly.
I'm not sure that we, uh, even allow.
Right, it was just, it was discussed with a different property owner, but.
Right.
Our ordinance says, if it's available.
Yeah, we have to.
We gotta put it in.
Usually if not available.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right, of which we do have one or two spots in town that it, that it is an issue.
And if you're gonna run a, uh, three hundred foot service, are you gonna allow it to be run down the, the alleyway, or has it gotta be run down somewhere else? I don't know what the answer is to that. Um, we did discuss that earlier in this, this, uh, project. This thing's been tossed around a lot, cause it's a, it's a tricky one, as you guys can see that. And, uh, um, they said they would put the, uh, services on their property, run it down the property line, and bring it out to the, out to the, uh, out to the roadway. So, that would have to be in the, and they had mentioned that they, they're not gonna build right away, I, I don't know if that's still the case, but, um, all of this has gotta get down in writing, and, and make sure the next group of people that are gonna look at this when this thing comes in, knows what they're gonna have to be required. So.
Not that it matters, but were you planning on developing this for somebody, or put it on the market and sell the land, or?
I would prefer not to be the one to develop it, yeah. I mean, that would factor in my marketing, the cost, the sale price, I would rather have somebody else do it, but, I mean, if I had to, because of all the requirements, I probably could.
So Jody, would you put a street in there?
Other than the alley?
Mm-hmm.
I hope not.
Well, would that, that also goes, goes toward an address?
Right, yeah, that was an issue I hadn't, I didn't think of.
Right.
So I'd have to, yeah.
There appears to be more questions than answers at this point, before we go forward.
Can I get a list of these questions? Cause I, I mean, all of this stuff is kinda, I haven't.
Diane, can you?
I haven't had time to think about some of the stuff.
Jody, I'll get those to you tomorrow, would that be okay?
What's that?
I can email those to you tomorrow, would that be okay?
Yep, that would be wonderful.
All right.
Okay, uh, commission, I assume we want to wait on this until we can get better answers?
I think one of the, the main concerns is, is the buildable area and the two surveys. That's a biggie, and.
Yeah, can you tell me exactly what the discrepancy is between the two surveys?
The one, um, Dave Maroni had done last summer, I believe, by, um, Rick Samuelson.
Yeah.
And he was, uh, Dave Maroni was our old city administrator.
Samuelson's, yep.
Yes, yes. So, sure, yeah, I would, grab that one. But is, I mean, is the Samuelson one, where they establish the actual bluff, is that what's different?
Yeah, yeah.
Look at the lot, look at the lines.
Because this, I mean, the setbacks are standard. They're just, Samuelson survey is saying that the bluff starts.
Sooner.
Closer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To be honest, the Samuelson survey almost makes it look like the existing house is questionable with that line, the highlight, the highlight goes right to it, and I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, and that's not right.
I mean, if you go out there and look, it's actually, it's a fairly flat area, so like you said, depends on what they call a bluff, I'm not an expert on that, that's why that survey is, but her house, I mean, it's a real flat backyard in front, behind your house, I mean.
It's nowhere near the bluff.
So.
That doesn't.
I mean.
We did, we did look at this, and it just doesn't look accurate. I mean, anyone's welcome to come out and, to the property anytime and look.
Do we have to notify neighbors within so many feet, like we do on some other things? Okay, we don't.
The only reason this.
The only reason this is here, we could've done this administratively.
Right.
And, uh, split this lot, but there's a, there was a lot of questions that we had, and, uh, I don't know, we're gonna talk a little bit about administrative lot splits here in a little bit, but, um, this one is so touchy that I think, uh, you as a planning commission, commission needed to, uh, look at this one.
Well, and I'd also like to know the history of why it was turned down before, cause that gave us some more clues as to what.
Their city, city engineer.
Cause to me, at first blush, looking at the contour lines and stuff, it looks like, God, that would be awful tight to put a house in there.
I mean, if you look at it though, if you actually go out there, I mean, you've been out there, haven't you?
Well, I, I live in, I, when I do my walk, I go to that cul-de-sac there, and then turn around, so, but I, I look down and.
But yeah, I mean, if you walk around in the woods a little bit, I mean, it's, it's a big area, it's a lot bigger than it looks on a little piece of paper, I guess.
No, no, I, I.
According to this, it's sixty feet deep on one end, and forty-two on the other, and it's ninety-one wide before it even tapers down, I mean, so if it's sixty by even forty feet, or, yeah, sixty deep one side, and it's forty-two the other, by ninety-one, I mean, that's, you know, way more than enough to put a house in.
But if you gotta have a thirty foot setback, cause of the bluff lines, that sixty foot, all of a sudden comes thirty foot, and it's tough.
Well, that's what the thirty foot setback already did. That's why I was giving you the suggestions, and I think this is more accurate than this other one. I'm an excavator, my trade too, and I deal with a little bit of this, not as much of the technical side, but, I mean, so that's already got a thirty foot and a thirty foot setback off the alleyway, is the way they have that.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to determine which survey is more accurate, and I think just by walking out to the property, you can see that this one, this one shows, like you said, it comes almost up to my house, and you can tell that's not right, just by looking.
Now, of course, as we need answers to a lot of our questions.
Mm-hmm.
A planning commission only meets once a month, so we're looking at next month, at best, to, to give any type of answer, and then a recommendation to the whole council.
So.
So, just so, so you're aware of that.
Yeah.
Well, we can, uh, we can.
We can table.
We can table it for now.
Yeah, that's.
So do I have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table this one.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks for coming in, Diane, I'll try and get you the information, or questions, as soon as you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, um, the next discussion item concerns resolution twenty twenty dash oh seven, administrative subdivision for Bruce and Kathy Tildersquist at six sixteen Minnesota Street East, administrative subdivision slash loan, lot boundary line adjustment for Bruce and Kathy, to allow a combination of two lots into one lot, uh, both of which are owned by the Tildersquists, and Bruce, go ahead.
Been working with Diane on that, and we, we did it, and I don't know if you sent the paperwork to the county, but, you know, it's, as far as we're concerned, we're done.
Basically, what it is, is, um, Bruce and Kathleen own two lots, they're side by side, and what they're proposing to do is to join both of those lots, and they want to do that to allow space for an accessory structure.
We, we wanna put up a, a thirty by thirty garage on the vacant lot, that we combine together with, uh, the regular lot.
Bruce, can I ask you a quick question? Where on the lot do you wanna put the accessory structure? Are you looking at the center, are you looking at the front, are you looking at the rear
Uh.
Of the lot?
The alley side.
The alley side, okay, so the rear, yeah.
On the east side of the lot.
Okay.
Kinda next to where the, um, garage that we have already.
Where the red car, and this.
Yep, yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Are you gonna connect them, or?
No, no.
So there would be a proper setback, according to our zoning, just in case this lot.
Well, the lots are combined together, but, um, I don't know what, how, how, how many feet.
Accessory structure, I believe.
From one lot to the other lot.
Yeah.
You know, twenty feet or so, I'm sure.
Accessory structures, I believe, are ten feet off the, off the rear lot line.
Cause there's, there's trees there, and we don't wanna disturb the roots of the trees, so I'm sure it'll be at least twenty feet from the original lot line.
Okay, uh, one of the concerns when I was looking at this is, um, as a city, we always want to, uh, especially now that we know if we can hit five thousand, we can get a bunch of money from the state every year, um, housing lots, you know, and you, you know, the empty lot there next to you is a very nice buildable lot.
Yep.
You said you're, you have already combined them?
Yes, we have.
No, they were gonna combine them, but the county wanted it done by resolution, so we're coming, we're going to planning commission with it.
I, I couldn't put a garage on the vacant lot unless there was a house structure there already.
Right.
So that's why we combined them together.
Right, right.
I, I, I'm trying to think, farther down the road, when, when you and Kathy, you know, decide to, whatever, sell or move, it'd be nice.
Well.
Be able to have that lot.
Talking to, um, Jerry Hughesby, he said that it would be more beneficial if we added the two lots together, and we'd get a, a higher price on our, when we sold, or when we died, and our kids sold it, or something like that, they would get a better price that way.
Bill's question, or his point before, is if our community does grow, would they be able to go back and split this again, and make that a buildable site with a pre-built garage, or a thirty by thirty shed?
Right, right, that's kinda what I was getting at.
So it wouldn't diminish the ability to still put a house on the lot?
I.
Right.
I don't think so, but maybe then they can, I don't know.
Cause part of what the, uh.
As long as we meet the setbacks.
Right.
And especially Matt, since he's put it in the rear of the property, cause then the house could still front Minnesota Street, so we would be good, yeah.
Right, one of the concerns, just as a city as a whole, is, and just putting another garage on there versus a home being built there, the city loses tax money also, and that's, you know, housing doesn't make the taxes for us, usually our commercial and industrial does, but it's still something to consider as a city. But as long as I know that we can, uh.
I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, but as long as.
I mean, we're paying taxes on both lots.
Right, but.
How?
The empty lot is a lot cheaper than the one with a home on it.
Yeah.
That I do know. I, I'm not opposed to what you wanna do here, I just wanna make sure that in the future, as, as Matt mentioned, you know, twenty years down the road, whatever, and that lot becomes available, and someone wants to split, put a house, cause it does make sense.
If, if they did put a house on it, the, it could be combined or, you know, linked up with the garage.
Mm-hmm, and, and not to digress a little bit, I, I know you had been before the public works and the alley and the way the water runs, did that ever get?
No.
Okay.
That was gonna be a, when you get done asking me questions, I got a question for you.
No, that's, that's fine, uh, Bruce, um, I guess, uh, commission, what, uh, what, what do you wanna do?
Make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
To approve resolution twenty twenty dash oh seven, um, all right, uh, if there's no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and, all right.
Okay, my question to you, I don't know, when was it? Sixteen months ago?
Yeah, it was at least a year and a half ago.
I think half of you were there.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
And I just left it on the table, but, um.
Right, and then Mike, Mike left, uh, his position as public works director, and we've kinda floundered on a few things here.
Well, kinda at that time, he said, what, what I wanted to do was tear up the alley, and, and, um, when Buddy Byers was alive, and he lived on the next door, and he was a dirt contractor, he said that there should've been three truckloads of gravel removed for the water to run decently through the alley. And so then Mike said, well, there's money in the slush fund to do that, but then he left, so nothing happened.
Right, cause your alley is here, and your.
Yeah.
Level into your garage is dropping off.
Yeah, and so, the next door neighbor, well, yeah, mine is that way, and that's kinda why we wanna get another garage. I'll let my wife worry that. But anyway, um, my next door neighbor, um, John Soul, behind there, his slope down, and there was always a pool of water there, and even last night after, I don't know how much water we had for rain, but it was full again. And so, my question is, if nothing's gonna be done, then I'm gonna have to build up my cement pad, where the, where the garage is, above the alley.
Matt, is that something that'll be?
So I'm gonna have to bring in Phil.
You'll, you'll have to, we'll have to bring that up to public works again and see, I remember Mike, we had talked about an in-ground drain, I mean, we, they just started spitballing, uh, possible ideas for that. We'd have to bring that up again, cause when it got tabled, it, it did not make it on the agenda again.
Yeah, well, I just, I don't know.
Right, no, I.
I don't, how did I leave it, Bill? I just threw it out and said, okay, you guys handle it.
It's, it's more important, I think, to get it solved before winter, and the snow, and the snow melt, and all that, cause that's where your.
Yeah.
Greater problems, is rainstorms, everybody gets puddles.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so, and Matt's, uh, the chair now of the, uh, public works, so.
Nope, that's Steve.
Oh, Steve is, I'm sorry. You're still on, you're still on public works.
So I don't, I don't know, maybe I, you know, I'd like to get.
We can bring it up.
Getting building as soon as possible, so.
Another item, tomorrow night at our council meeting, we're gonna be hiring a new public works director, so I think, I, I'm not sure how long it'll be before that gentleman starts, but, uh, then we can bring it to him also, and you can come get a firsthand look at it.
Yeah, well then, would that have to come back here then, from him, or?
Well, public works.
Public works go directly to the council with an approval, or with a suggestion.
Whatever's gonna work. So that's where we have to leave it at the, at the moment, Bruce.
So, um, well, my thing you approved tonight, will go to the council tomorrow night, right? So, or how is that?
It won't make that agenda, cause it's within twenty-four hours, it'll be on our next one, right?
Correct, our September, matter of fact, September first will be our first meeting, and, uh.
Okay.
So that's when that'll get officially approved.
Okay, so when will I be able to get a building permit? Cause, uh, you know, kinda, kinda.
Yeah, the day after.
Fumble with the contractors, and, you know, they kinda wanna get going, and.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
September second is what Neil says.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Council approval on the first.
And Bruce, we can actually turn that into the county, and we can get approval, and we'll just not have you pay for it until.
Have the county approve of it, or before?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
I'm reasonably sure it'll pass the, uh, the council, because three of us here have already voted okay, so.
Okay.
And I'm sure John's not opposed, so, we're gonna have the votes, regardless, so.
So, okay.
So September second is when you'll.
I'll be on, I'll be on the agenda on the twenty second, or the second of September.
On the first of September.
Okay.
And then the second, you can go do your stuff.
Okay, so, um, the person you're gonna hire tomorrow night, how do I get the whole?
Well, I don't know.
Get to see him, or?
When he would start, subject to background check.
He probably won't start until after September.
It'll be after the.
It'll be a month, maybe we can, uh, maybe we can go out there and take a look at it.
Oh, yeah, bring Tony with and.
Yeah, so.
I'll wait until it rains and then come out and look.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Bruce. If you think we'll be able to scrape it off, we got a road grader.
Go out there and see if that lot, I mean, we, it.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Okay, uh.
Compared to the lot.
Okay, uh, next, uh, next item, uh, item D, resolution twenty twenty oh eight, administrative subdivision for Andy Haines, owner of Minnesota Woodcraft at eight ninety-four Fourth Street South. Administrative subdivision slash lot combination for Minnesota Woodcraft to allow a piece of the parcel of the Cannon Falls Mall property to be added to the current parcel of Minnesota Woodcraft to allow for business expansion. Who gets that one?
And it would be, um, they would be adding ten thousand two hundred square feet from the mall property onto Andy Hines. And what he is going to do is expand his business in town with that property.
So we, do we know if he's going to add another building there or?
He is going to, yes.
Okay, cool.
Wow.
One of the things I want you to consider is that there's, uh, existing assessments on that. And when you make the motion, please, uh, um, refer to that assessment. So, um, the mall, Ed Reimers is going to keep all the assessments on his parcel. So we'll have to get him to sign that agreement that you, Diane passed out, uh, to you guys.
And that's because, uh, the original assessments were for Reimer and he's going to keep, not burden the new owner.
Going to keep one hundred percent of the assessment.
All right, um, any comments? Uh, if not, uh, take a motion and include the special assessment.
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight along with the special assessment agreement that Mr. Reimers will have to sign, keeping all the assessments for that, uh, property. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. Uh, last item, number E, is a review of a concept plan for the first edition of towering bluffs and discussion to set a public hearing if approved.
I can take that. Uh, Mr. Jablonski cannot be here tonight. He, uh, he is ill, so I, I'll take over for him. Uh, this is a pretty basic subdivision. If you focus on the square right in the middle of the page, uh, that's the water tower. And, uh, uh, I don't think you'll see more of a basic subdivision this one. It's just a street going in with a T and lots going off of both sides. The lots are forty-five to, forty-five to sixty feet wide. And, uh, um, I know in your goal-setting meetings, you wanted some affordable homes and forty-five lot, foot lots, uh, bring that to the city. And sixty-foot lots, uh, you can get a nice home on them and, uh, so there's a combination of, of both forty-five and sixty. If you, uh, if you like the concept that, uh, that he's bringing forth, appreciate a motion to, uh, set a public hearing and he'll bring it in in his preliminary plat.
Are, are these going to be slab on grade?
Um, we'll have to see which, uh, what his grading plan looks like when he gets that.
Okay.
Are we dealing with the same conditions of the soil as we dealt with across the street?
Across twenty-five there?
I would hope not.
God, I hope there's not clay there.
I think we better make sure we get some good core samples out of that area and have the city engineer take a look at it.
That wouldn't be necessary for bringing forward the plan anyhow.
Yep.
You got to do is go.
John, you looking forward to some new neighbors?
Now, Neil, would we?
I'm picking the highest point of this whole partial up there. It's going to be a lot more sand.
Yeah.
Would we be able to, because this goes right over that existing road to the water tower. Are we able to put one off of Spring Garden Road?
It'll, uh.
To get access to that water tower?
They'll actually use the road.
They'll use the, oh, sure.
They'll use the street that's, they're going to play in.
Yeah, that, that T's there.
It's, uh, yeah, that'll be a nice access for us.
And are there any rules about, um, how close you can be to a water tower? No, okay.
And Spring Garden Road ceased to exist. It's not in the plans.
Why is my phone ringing?
Yeah, I think it looks good.
Oh, come on.
The soil's good.
From, uh, footage to acreage, what would those lots break down to? Okay.
Okay, um. Do I, um, you just need us for an approval for, uh, for the, in favor of the concept plan is what you're looking for.
Set a public hearing for the next, uh, planning commission meeting.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to, uh, to approve the concept plan?
I will make a motion, we approve the concept plan.
Okay, I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second also, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I, yeah, I'm, I also, okay, uh, you had, um. Something else, Neil, you wanted to talk about the administrative, uh.
Yeah, one of the things I, uh, I want to bring to the planning commission as we work through these, uh, uh, lot combination, administrative lot combinations and, and lot splits, as we, uh, bring in these subdivisions and you take a look and you got, uh, some forty-five foot lots, um, I think we got to be a little careful on how generous we are with, uh, lot combinations. I think the goal here, uh, is to put homes in the, in the city. I know you guys, uh, in your goal-setting, uh, meeting is looking at affordable homes and, and more homes. And if we allow, uh, um, lot combinations administratively, um, you know what we're going to get? There's, you're going to buy two forty-five foot lots here and you want to, want to combine them. And, uh, I think, uh, that'll happen more often than not. And if we end up with two, three subdivisions, which I think we might here, we got another one in the works, um, that may be coming at the next, uh, meeting and, and, uh, we've got to be. I would like to carry on that conversation with the planning commission on how, how your feelings are on, on combining lots that are two buildable lots and put them together so they can put a garage on one, such as Mr. Tilterquist and, and, uh, in the future. Because it, uh, it does use up a lot of, uh, 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 street frontage. You take a look at that and, and, you know, residential, uh, uh, housing districts don't pay for themselves anyhow. And then you, uh, take a, a good lot and, and just build a garage on it. It, it does hinder how, uh, how the taxes are laid out in the, in the city. I know people like to have the wide open spaces and the, and the bigger lots, but, uh, um, I'd just like to have your opinions on and maybe think about it. It's nothing that we have to decide about tonight, but think about it and we can talk about it again, uh, at the next meeting. Because, you know, you're, all these lots here now will have services stub to them. And I would imagine the one that we just approved has a service stub to it. And we could put a house on that and, and, uh, have another two, three thousand dollars in, in taxes paid. But now we just put a garage on it and that'll be the way it'll be. So I think it's something that we should look at and I don't think, uh, administratively, um, we should be, uh, doing it. I think it should be coming to the planning commission for these things and, and, uh, Diane and I, you know, just such as, uh, as Jody Ripples, uh, one here, that was a difficult one. And, uh, I think staff could end up with having some issues, um, with either you as the commission or them as, uh, the requesters saying, well, if I would have turned that down, then it was me and Diane saying, no. And I don't think that's right. I think, I think the commission needs to make that decision, so.
That's why the commissions and especially the council, that's what we get paid the big bucks for.
Mm-hmm, so anyhow, I would like you to think about that and, uh, we'll continue to have the conversation. And it goes both ways with the lot splits and the lot combinations, because, you know, if you look at what we just did, that was two perfectly good lots and we just put them together and, and, uh, and made one that could have been built on, made it. So, just an idea that.
You, you think something could be written in like, like when they come and, um, show a survey or show whatever they're going to do, you know, that, that we could put something in there that, you know, they can't, lots can't be combined or something or?
If it's a buildable lot.
Yeah.
Of some sort.
Yeah.
I think that would be, uh, fair, because, uh, um, because then you just pulled one house out of the city of Cannon Falls.
For, for now.
For now.
For at least next five, ten years anyhow.
Yeah.
And Glenn, a really good example that, um, Neil gave was if you look at that, there's what, twenty-four, twenty-six lots there? And not everyone would combine them, obviously, but if they did, I mean, you could be down to twelve lots or twelve families moving into town as opposed to twenty-four. That's the big difference.
Yeah.
So we have to change our, uh, our ordinances to reflect that if we went that route.
And then, well.
And another reason why I brought that one to you, because the administrative subdivision says on an improved street. Well, that one wasn't an improved street. That's why you guys got to take a look at that. But Mr. Tilterquist, uh, his is an approved street and, uh, I still felt uncomfortable because I know as, as part of the planning commission, but more on the finance side, on how much taxes are produced on these lots and the, and the front footage of streets and, and knowing that it doesn't, uh, pay for itself in the first place. It, I look at it in the financial aspect of it all, I guess.
I do know we forgot to question, even though I know this is going to happen. He already has two structures on his property, so the, the small shed's going to get torn down. Because we can only have two external.
Going back to what you said about combining, uh, with developments like this, uh, would we encourage there to be like housing associations then? Because then they can set the rules of what style houses and what, and then they can say, no, we, you don't double up and.
They'll probably have covenants on that, uh, subdivision, more than likely. Uh, the city doesn't, uh, enforce covenants.
Yeah.
Uh, that will be public roadways, so that'll all be public right-of-ways and, and housing associations probably won't be in effect, but covenants is will.
And it, and it will be incumbent upon the developer to put the streets, the stub in and all that sort of stuff in. The reason I say that is if you know where I live, right across the street now, they started building on the first house, that's fine, but there's supposedly three lots there. The middle one's not stuffed in. We refer to it as a McMahon special, a former city engineer who. So if they ever want to build in that middle lot or they have to build on the two, right? From my driveway across the street, they got to tear it all up and put stuff in. And then we patch what is considered, according to Tony, uh, one of our better streets. I mean, there's some crack seals and stuff like that, so we got to pay pretty close attention when things are getting put in so we don't run into this situation. For me personally, if they do that, it's just a hassle for a couple of days, but the road's integrity has now been.
And typically, if you do a lot combination, um, you're going to require the, the services to be capped, especially, uh, you know, take, cap it at the water main, so you don't have that possibility of leaking and the same with the sewer. So now you're digging into the street again. So it, it's something to talk about, something to think about and maybe have, uh, uh, some more conversation at the next meeting, so.
So when they do a subdivision like this, do they have to stub water and sewer in on the lots? Okay.
Every lot will have a water and sewer service.
They're all ready to go.
Yep.
Okay.
If I had a disappointment with Jablonski is that the forty-five foot lots, he's thinking split level homes on all those lots. Now, I'm not a split level home, I wouldn't want one.
No.
That's why I'm like, if I was to go into that development, I'm looking to downsize, I want a sixty-foot lot myself. But, uh.
Yeah.
We got to watch this, you know, or, you know, they buy a couple lots, like you say, and they want to combine them or something.
So could we make him make sixty-foot lots instead of forty-five foot or?
Yeah, that'll be, uh, that's part of the planning commission process.
Okay.
The preliminary plat is not the final plat. You'll see this thing twice yet. One of the things is when you talk affordable homes, uh, every foot that you have in front of your house is worth a lot of money as far as infrastructure. And then to keep the lot prices low, that's why they have the affordable, or the, the forty-five foot lot to be affordable homes. And unfortunately nowadays, affordable homes is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, uh, um, and crawling upward. And that's what he's trying to, uh, bring here is, uh, affordable homes and then a, and then a mid-sized nicer home on the sixty-foot lots.
If he went to sixty-foot, he'd probably be another fifty thousand.
Yeah, it would be tough. And we know all by the school, we have a potential for the grade development, but the owner doesn't want to do what's necessary to, to allow us to go forward on that, both in pricing and infrastructure that he would have to put in. The ones he did build out there, there was already, was it Seventy-Second Street or something like that, I believe, right out there?
Yeah.
Uh, so he was able to do those without having to, you know, other than the stub ends, do much. But, you know, the, because that, I can't remember how many houses he was originally talking, but I think it was like fifty to seventy-five.
It was a lot.
There's two out there on where you're talking, that, that street right across the school?
Yeah, right on, right on nineteen there, yeah.
That's a nice development.
Could be.
Could be, but.
Absolutely.
But, but the owner's a little bit high on his lot prices and, and doesn't want to quite pay the money it's going to take to do the infrastructure.
All right.
If there's nothing else, uh.
Another question and that's, uh, have we heard anything from Minnot about sidewalk upgrades they came through last year?
Is that for next summer?
I don't know when it's going to be, but it'll be a long nineteen. I don't, have we heard anything more from them on that?
You're, you're pretty darn interested right there.
Well, yeah, because they're, yeah, I'm right in the heart of all that. I think it's important to note that if anybody noted in the big rain that we got, eight, eight inches or whatever it was that night, that my sidewalk, uh, became a river. There was a two-by-four floating down onto Highway nineteen from up, up. Came up from the gully up there. I don't know how much damage it did, but it was, it was a two-by-four, six-foot, two-by-four floating down the highway. And I had debris up against, thank goodness I had a, um, uh, flower barrier, I guess is the way to put, or flower bed there that stopped the water, diverted it around the house and went down the front sidewalk and then just went down the sidewalk too. It was a major, I've only seen it a few times, but I think it's good that we might make note to, uh, Minnot that there's a possibility of an issue.
I'm updating on that project, but COVID, I think everything's.
I can't hear you, what?
Since the COVID, I think everything's been dropped.
Oh, okay, fine.
Since the COVID, not, I don't know development there at all.
You never know what's going to surprise you with those people. I've been surprised a few times.
Then, then we should make them, make them if they leave those signs up that say yield, put a sign underneath it, yield left turn only, because people come there and they get just about in the corner.
Yeah.
And they see this yield sign, they slam on their brakes and like.
And they see this yield sign, they slam on their brakes and like. Yeah, I don't know. What am I supposed to yield to? Yeah, on my, on that corner there where I live.
Your house too, same thing.
I saw three semis within an hour, one tried to go straight up the hill, of course, but stopped before he went straight up, then the other made a right turn and tried to go up the hill. And the other turned the corner and stopped right there, there's a problem with signage or something or? Yeah, it's just, it's just a really a bad deal.
It's a Google map, all those semis, they're trying to go to Park Avenue, in any corner, and they spin some to Park Street.
But I've never seen it happen, like, I've never seen it three in an hour.
First, let's, let's end the meeting here, first, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nice.
Okay.